Good evening. Tonight is February 28, 2024, six oh two. This is the Ashland School Committee meeting. As always, we start by reading our vision statement. This is our new and approved vision statement. And it reads, "The Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff who feel safe and supported, are empowered with academic and social emotional skills to pursue their chosen path and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities." This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. I'm going to start by asking folks to, I'll review the agenda, then we'll do attendance. Order of business is that we've done our call to order. Opening procedures, we'll review our agenda in a minute. There we are now. A public comment. And then administrative items for tonight include review and approved correction to the school year calendar twenty-four, twenty-five. We have a presentation from Ms. Saint Kerr at the high school about weighted courses. We'll have an update from Ms. Arnold regarding English language, English Language Education Department. An Eagle Scout project presentation from Nathan Gurlovin. I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. Hi, Sam. Assistant Superintendent's update, superintendent's update, warrant approvals, gifts and donations, member updates, action items, and then adjourn. I do believe we want to take things a little out of order to allow Nathan to go first and then allow him to get to a meeting, I think. So I'll ask to do attendance, make sure people are okay with the order, and ask if everybody's okay with resequencing to move our fourth item up to just follow public comment. Marcy?
Yes.
And you're here too, right?
And I'm here.
You know?
Here and yes.
Paul?
Yes, I'm good with that as well.
And remotely Lori?
Here and yes.
All right, and well, for me. All right, first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Going once, going twice, moving on. Okay. Nathan, want to come up to the podium? And anybody else who is going to speak with you is welcome to come up as well.
I believe it is.
Yep, you're good.
All right. Hello, my name is Nathan Gurlovin, and I am a junior at Ashland High School, a member of Ashland Boy Scouts Troop Two Thirty-Two in Ashland, and I am working on my Eagle Scout project. Environmental sustainability is very important to me. And when I started to think about completing an Eagle project, my goal was to help promote this in our community. Last summer, I consulted Ashland's Town Sustainability Project Manager, Ms. Samantha Riley, as well as the Ashland High School Principal, Ms. Kelly Saint Kerr, on how I could complete, how I could complete an Eagle project that would help the schools become more sustainable. Ms. Riley and Ms. Saint Kerr mentioned that they were both hopeful that the schools would start composting again and requested that I build a structure for the high school cafeteria that would facilitate both recycling and composting. Before moving forward the project, I met with various Ashland High School staff who would play a role in the ongoing maintenance of the system. And I started to get a better sense for some of the challenges that the school would be facing with composting. Working together, the final project that we came up with was for me to design and build a permanent wooden structure that can house two large plastic bins that are, the bins will be about forty-two inches tall, twenty-four inches wide, thirty-two inches deep. And the bins would be currently used for plastic water bottle recycling in the cafeteria, but would be a compatible size. Our, the shape would be a compatible size for the composting bins if and when the school decided to move forward with that part of the project. The recycling bins will have an immediate good impact on the high school because we are selling over a thousand water bottles a month at the cafeteria, many of which are being found in the trash bins. The Environmental Action Club at Ashland High School generously agreed to take care of the recycling bins as part of their biweekly recycling pickup. And if this plan is approved by the school committee, I will go through with the approval process with Boy Scouts Council, and I will have the full support of the troop, both leaders and scouts, have a couple of the scouts here, to design and build the structure in a way that's durable and long-lasting for the school. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Nathan. So I want to first just thank you for, why don't you stay there for a sec? Why don't you hang on? Thank you for, you know, as you're thinking about your Eagle Scout project, thinking about serving the schools. And we always appreciate when members of the community, and particularly students, are looking to give something back and help. Let me, I think it's probably important because of logistics in this, get some understanding from administration, whether it's Mr. Adams or Ms. Saint Kerr, to talk about sort of how this would work and whether it works. And then we can also get some questions in from the school committee. But why don't we start with you, Jim?
Sure. First and foremost, thank you for considering working, doing something with the schools. We've had a number of projects through the years. And I think back all the way to Craig Barrett and the initial courtyard at the high school and to watch how we had transformed that place into, you know, an area where our students can actually use it throughout the year, which has really been wonderful. So my comments are from John Murray, who is our Director of Facilities. And I want to make sure that his concerns were brought forth. I know you'd had conversations with him.
Yes.
And certainly the conversations with regard to composting and how you've adapted your project from there. Certainly, it's something, as he said to me, he said, "Jim, I'm certainly in favor of sustainability projects and also in favor of composting." But he also believes that, from all literature educationally, we need to actually start it much earlier, not just at the high school, but much earlier at the elementary schools and lead its way up. But with regard to this project in particular, with the recycling bins, he still has a number of concerns with it in terms of where it would be located, how will it impact the custodial and maintenance staff on a regular basis, on a daily basis, in terms of their time, whether it's... I'm glad to hear you talked about the environmental club being responsible for actually removing the bins and putting them into the bigger recycling bins.
Yes.
Otherwise, that's another aspect of the job that the custodial staff would have
Yes.
had to have undertaken, which I didn't, you know, catch the first time. But I really appreciate you said that, because that was a concern that Mr. Murray had, was additional work for the custodial staff of taking it and putting it into the bins that Waste Management needs to use. So when they wheel them out and Waste Management picks up all of the recycling, it's another transfer that has to occur. So I appreciate that you clarified that. So that was one thing that he had, he had mentioned. In terms of sustainable, where it's going to be placed, that's a concern that he had. I don't think we have enough details with that. Where is it going to be? In the cafeteria? And if so, how will that look in terms of cleaning of the calf all the time? But is it, if it's then put in the back area, in the loading dock area, what is that going to do in terms of space there as well? So those were his, his concerns, and I just wanted to bring those up, partly because, again, as, you know, Nathan, you've had those conversations with him, I think, throughout this process. And it's fair to say he still has some concerns about that component of it. He's absolutely in favor of trying to figure out something for you to do with the schools from a sustainability standpoint, but he doesn't know if this is the right project. So.
Okay. Do you want me to just like try to address those things?
Certainly, if you, you're welcome to. I think the board would like to hear. They're the ones who will vote on this. But I just wanted to give the feedback from Mr. Murray.
Okay.
Yep.
So the main problem, just to be clear, is location, basically, of this. Okay, so I discussed at the meeting, I should elucidate a little more about what the meeting was. So I had, I had a few meetings. I actually got to meet with Mr. Kyra first to talk about things I could potentially do. And you sent, I was really, I really appreciate you sent an email out to all the principals and stuff like that. I end up coming back to the high school, looking at stuff, and had that next meeting, which I talked about with Ms. Riley and Ms. Saint Kerr, where we talked about the composting. And then the third meeting, which I've had with people, which is separate from emails and stuff, which I actually unfortunately never got to. John Murray wasn't able to make it to the meeting. The timing didn't work. A couple people weren't able to make it to this meeting, which I'm now talking about, the third meeting. Even though we got to talk a fair bit over email about these concerns. So at the third meeting, we had a few people present. We had the custodian, actually, as well as Ms. Saint Kerr, Ms. Riley, Mr. O'Brien was there as well, and the chef, Chef Tony. So we could get his advice and opinions on this. He's actually the one who brought up the whole idea of recycling water bottles, because I didn't realize how big I think it was in the high school. But he's the one who told me about the thousand, over a thousand water bottles a month. But to get back to your question, the location that we discussed was sort of close to, I don't know how recently everyone's been in the high school, the old place where we used to stick the reusable trays, which we've moved away from. That sort of corner, having something that goes along that wall, doesn't block the door, anything like that, the size fits. I've checked that, like if I build the stuff that's compatible for these things and they slide in, then it would fit nicely. But it would be by and against the wall of, well, next to, I should say, the place where we used to put reusable trays to get washed. And that's the plan that we had talked about in that meeting.
Okay, I just want to ask another follow-up with that. So thanks, because I'm learning this as well. Part of the conversations we've had, again, in the ten years that I've been superintendent and the projects that we've agreed to and the board has supported, we've actually had the, a visual of what you're looking at and what you're planning on doing there. And I think that's important, partly because of where you're describing. I don't think they're all going to know exactly what you're looking at. And, and I get it, I know where you're talking about. But I think that is important information to see exactly what you're envisioning.
Jim, why don't I, why don't we see if we have some questions and sort of where the committee as a whole? Because I think if, if there's general support for the project, but there's some logistics that need to be worked out, I think we can approach that differently than if people are, for some reason, anti-composting or anti-recycling, which I'm guessing is not, guessing not the case, but, you know.
I'm anti-sustainability.
Yeah, great. Only in big buildings.
Yeah.
So anybody have questions or comments?
I have one question. And for, when I was originally reading through your summary, I was picturing this outside. So I'm glad to know it doesn't sound like it's outside. But one of the things that, that kind of came to mind, and Mr. Adams mentioned this a little bit in terms of best practices around composting. Obviously, we're not quite ready to compost at the high school yet. And I think the research shows that in order to be ready to compost at the high school, we need students learning it from an early age. And as they age up, eventually, we'll be ready to, to do that at the high school too. So my thought is around the materials that you're going to be using to build this and making sure that whatever those materials are, they're sustainable, if you will, for lack of a better, for lack of a better term, to make sure that it's, there's not a lot of concerns or, or maybe thinking through how to alleviate concerns or how to deal with issues around if, if they're getting wet, if there's mold, if the, if it's wood, depending upon where it is. Again, I can't quite visualize yet where, where you're thinking of putting this. But to make sure that if it takes ten years, I don't know when, when we're going to be ready to compost at the high school. And so it may, may be more focused on recycling for a while. So thinking through making sure, what are the materials you're going to use to build it? Is it going to last for kind of the duration that we're hoping we'll take to get to the, where composting will be a reality? So I'd, I'd love to learn a little bit more about that. And that, you may not have that detail yet, but I think that's something that would be important to think through as well, too.
Okay. Do you want me to talk a little bit?
Sure, if you have some details, please.
I don't have the full flushed out thing. It's actually part of what I'm working on for when I propose this to the Boy Scouts Council, because they're definitely going to be asking about materials and looking at that exact thing. I'm lucky to say that as someone who hasn't said everything about materials, I've looked into different types of wood, how we could, whether it's lacquer it or have it be pressure washed, whatever it needs to be, or have a coat of some sort of plastic thing that goes over the wood. I'm lucky that I have my project coach, who's done this for a fair few projects before, and also a couple other very handy leaders in the troop, who really, basically all the leaders show up to every scout project, and most scouts do as well, and it's a team effort. And they will definitely be talking it over with me on what they think is right. I think definitely durability and sustainability, like you were saying, of the structure we build itself will be important. I guess I don't have that detail for you, but I can definitely tell you that that's something that is already a requirement, quote unquote, or something that I would be thinking about and is something which we've had some discussion on and certainly will have more in the future.
Well, just, I mean, in general, again, thank you for thinking of the schools, thinking of sustainability. I applaud your efforts. I think this sounds like a wonderful project. I think a few more details would be helpful, though, so that we can better envision exactly what this looks like to, to see how it will come to fruition and what the different stages will look like.
Marcy, Paul, and Lori chime in if, or put your hand up or something, but.
Yeah, I mean, so I echo, I won't regurgitate everything that you said about, appreciate you wanting to use your Eagle Scout project for the schools. I think that's great. When I read through this, I, I immediately wanted to understand the process, right? And not of your project, but the, the vessel or the, you know, this, the structure is kind of an endpoint of a process that I don't know that we have, right? So we don't, we don't currently compost, and there's certainly some, some, some training or conditioning of people that need to occur. We need to have a process for that, all those things. And so I balance the, I have some questions about the process and understanding that, understanding how this integrates with the other components that we already have, our waste management collection and on all those things. And, and then you kind of piggybacking on that, when you start to, it's one thing to have recycling. And then when you talk about composting in the cafeteria in particular, right? Sanitations, we don't want this to become where our health inspector comes in and says, "What's that smell? What's going on in, in the cafeteria?" Right? We have to be very sensitive to that. And as we talk about it, especially around the composting piece, because I want to, I want to value your project and what you're going to do as well. So I don't want, I don't, I want to make sure that it's something that's going to be valuable to us and that we're going to use and not, not just be a token thing that's, that's sitting there. So I also, when I look at composting in particular, I'm wondering about something constructed like this as opposed to something purchased that is metal or whatever that's purposely built that will, for something like that, because you're going to have those materials, if it's metal, stainless steel, or whatever it is, those are sanitary. Those can be wiped down easily where a porous material like a wood or something like that, you know, you can put something on it, a lacquer or a varnish or something, but then you have to apply it, you know, again, in that maintenance. So that, those are the initial things when I read it. I'm like, okay, we, we don't do these things today, so at least some of them. And so if we don't have that on the roadmap or a plan to do them, I, I want your, your, what your efforts to be not done in vain, right? And so those are my initial thoughts of just questions are around it. Because I think it's great that you want to do this, because, yeah, the, the amount of recycling that doesn't get recycled is, is something we want to address. So maybe at least for what you already do know, you can talk about a little bit of the process that I'm trying to understand what you envision the process being of students or faculty. What are individual persons' roles in this? What are our students supposed to do? What are our staff supposed to do? And what is that life cycle of, hey, someone comes into cafeteria, they purchase water, they do whatever they do, and what does that look like? Because the box, you know, the, the structure is just a one component in a, in a system. And I'm, I'm just concerned that if we don't have the system, we don't have a plan for the system. I don't want, I don't want to waste your efforts, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think you're, what you're saying is very important. The truth is that for now, I mean, the reason that I don't think my efforts would be in vain is quite simply that it is going to be functioning as that recycling bin, which we don't have. And that I have seen myself and people like Chef Tony have told me that like, there genuinely are people who, just because they're not a fan of the taste of the water, which you get from the filters, which I don't really mind myself and I use, but they don't like it, is what his theory is. And so genuinely, there are people in the caf, who just buy the water bottle, dump it, and then walk to the trash can and throw it out. So I think that the efforts I'd be doing to have something in the schools instead of nothing would already be a benefit. I'm not as focused right now in terms of building this and putting it in there about the composting part in the sense of that I think the recycling part is already helping and that's sort of the main, that's the center point.
In your mind, this as a standalone recycling would be of value?
Come on up, Kelly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something a little history that I know we talked about way back, but our Environmental Action Club actually did obtain a grant to bring in composting recycling bins, I think it was back sixteen, seventeen, maybe. So we did have a process of getting that started. The composting was a big concern at the time because of the upkeep of it. But prior to that, recycling, students recycling their plastic in the cafeteria was something that happened, and it, for some reason, doesn't happen anymore, which is part of why I found it, this to be a very valuable project. So we do have the composting outdoor squares in our court, one of our courtyards, where students were bringing some of that compost. And we, you know, in talking through this whole process, really, you know, those of us that were part of it really saw a need to say, we need to, you know, our high schoolers do tend to recycle in the classroom bins, I think.
Yeah, we actually do a quite good job of it.
Yes, and our club comes around and helps the custodians. My understanding is that the custodians do work and empty those bins into the big, into the big bins. But the club wants to be a part of that and help with that. But we really saw the glaring issue of the bins in the cafeteria went away, and we want to find a way to bring them back into the culture. So we've talked a lot about the education that will be on our roll and the, you know, part, separate from your project, the education will be with students. And part of, I think, what you have been talking about is, you know, designing something that we can put something in that only allows you to put in a water bottle or something like that, so that other things aren't getting put into the big recycle bins we have. But I just wanted to share a little of the history that we have had some attempts and some structures in the building.
If we, if we never do composting in the cafeteria, this as a recycling project is valuable?
Definitely, definitely. And I would say when we talked in the summer, we used to have, our scraps went to a pig farm or something, and we, I didn't know until we came back to the school year that we didn't have that relationship anymore with where some of our kitchen scraps were going.
Yeah, because I have a different concern when it comes to composting, you know. My wife composts, so inside we have a small canister. It's got a special bag, it's got a special lid, you know, and so, and that's just in our house. It's not in, you know.
Right. We had the things that you experienced, the fruit pies and the mess and, yeah.
And so I, I think, I think separating those out and saying, hey, is this good with just the thing that we think we can accomplish, you know, in the near term?
Why don't we see if Marcy or Lori has anything, and then I want to throw out an idea for, Marcy, you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, two things that come to mind, and Kelly, you just said it. One is if you can, when you're documenting your process, talk about how you're going to loop in the education of your peers to take part in recycling and/or eventually composting. I think that's really helpful. And was also just curious if you had spoken about putting this in at the lower schools, like if you had gone into any of that in the meetings? And you don't have to answer that now, it's just a question. If there's, you know, literature that as you go up through the schools, that would be a helpful way to start it. And I guess the other question I have, because I'm an accountant, is what's the cost to maintain this going forward? And have you thought about that and as part of it? And again, you don't have to answer that tonight, it's just a, just a question. And you're doing a great job answering all the questions, by the way, very impressed.
Thank you. I can definitely focus on the last one first, because I think that's the one that's most fresh in my mind, and it's pretty simple in the sense of, I have to do fundraising for my own project in the sense of I'm not asking you guys for money to complete this work. I would be building it and implementing it, using the resources that I'm able to fundraise. And I'm lucky that some of the leaders have trucks and stuff that can help me drive it over, and we can all work together and get it put in the right place. So money-wise, that's all set, as well as with recycling, we already have a recycling contract. And if the Environmental Action Club is taking care of it, then we wouldn't need any custodians to be working on it in terms of just picking it up. So that should be zero cost as well. So the recycling portion of the project would definitely be zero cost. Yeah.
Now, from a location, is, would this, is this near the trash receptacles as well? Because it probably won't work very well if this is off in the corner and, you know, and trash receptacles are in the middle of the room, just like at the grocery store.
Can I hold on that thought? I think where, what I was going to suggest, and I want to give Lori an opportunity here too, but is I think there are a lot of details, right, that we can make a decision about that we want to hear more on, or we want to say, look, he's, he's trying to do something that's really positive here, and I think everybody's responding by saying, "This is a great idea, and thank you." And so I think generally speaking, we want to encourage that and support that, but we want to make sure, you know, all the concerns are addressed. And so we can either look for Nathan to come back with more information, or we could also sort of refer this to administration and look at and say, if superintendent and the building principal and our director of facilities are okay with the implementation, do we need to, do we feel the need to hear anything more? And the only reason I cut you off, Paul, and I apologize for doing it, is, you know, sort of getting into the logistics, I think you're raising a valid point of, if one bucket's over there and the trash is over here, it's just going to go to whatever's closest, right?
Well, if they got to go to the trash anyway, they're, they're going to make one stop.
Right. So I, I think that's, it's a valid, valid consideration, but I don't know that's one that we need to get into. So before we kind of come back to sort of how do we want to proceed, let's see. Mistasti, from wherever you are in the virtual land, any questions or comments? Yes, we can.
So first of all, thank you so much for bringing this forward. We love a great Eagle Scout project, and, and we've had so many great ones, and this sounds like a great one, too. And we certainly are all very much pro recycling and sustainability. My concern, just for tonight, or at least in this moment, is that if what I'm hearing, if our facilities director isn't a hundred percent like on board in this moment, at least with what was initially presented, that would be a big obstacle for me to be able to support it. I mean, the school committee does have to approve anything where there's going to be an installation on the property. And so if there was any concern on that end, I really would either want to hear more directly from him or I'd want the administration to go back and answer questions. And even if some alternate things come up tonight, I also feel like there's a bigger conversation here that we haven't really had as a group. That is, it's glaringly obvious now that it's, that it's necessary that we talk about, you know, these are important things, and Ms. Saint Kerr did get up there and say, "We haven't had recycling, and we need to fix that." But I feel like, you know, there's some kind of managed conversation where we need to understand what needs to happen in each building, what needs to happen first? How is the education going to happen? Who's paying for all of this? Instead of letting little projects go along here and there, unless there's some kind of variation of this that can, you know, be a quick fix for something, that wouldn't be the end of the conversation for me. I, so I feel, I would feel like I need more reassurance from the administration and our facilities director, and I would want to get together with the school committee and whoever needs to be there to educate me more on how we have a thoughtful process about how to move forward in this realm.
Nathan, can I ask you, are you, do you have a time constraint that you're working under that, you know, you need to get your project done by May first or, or something like that? Or is this something you're going to work on over the next year?
Well, the time constraint is technically my eighteenth birthday, but, which I have time for because I am a junior and I turned seven. and I turned seventeen not super long ago. The hope that I definitely had was that I could do it this year, like sort of finish the whole planning process this winter and start working on building and then implement this spring. So, and yeah, and I mean, I'll be gone for chunks of the summer and then all of a sudden you're back to school and it's closed, so.
So I mean, it definitely sounds like there's, there's a need for some sort of more detailed work and to sort of hone in on what the project really is going to be now and how it's going to work. And again, I'm looking to both the rest of the school committee as well as administration to see whether people want to sort of have a final approval after we get more details, or are people comfortable sort of deferring that to administration to work out and sort of generally give some blessing on at least going forward with this. So let me just pose that question to folks and see where we are in it.
For me, it depends on where Jim, John and Kelly think it is, right? Because most of the time when we, we approve something, you know, subsequent, you know, subsequent staff or administration approval or whatever, it, it has some, it's a little further down the line. And so I don't want to pass the buck, as it were. I don't, I don't want to just, hey, we love sustainability, we love the fact that you want to do this and, and it should, to be able to be great and then just ship it off our plate if we should be looking at it deeper. And I don't want to put the administration in a, in a position, so I, I'd want more information about how they, where they felt it was in the process to, because I don't want to, you know, just kick it, kick it down, kick it down the road prematurely.
I agree. I think it will be helpful if, if you're able to come back to another meeting with some of the details that we've asked questions about. Maybe if you have a visual to share so we can give us, those of us who aren't as familiar with the cafeteria kind of to be able to visualize what the project looks like. And, you know, kind of some of the bigger picture questions that we have as well too. I agree, is, I trust our administrators fully, but I also don't want to leave something else on their plate when we could, could work through some of the details at this level as well too.
Marcy, any thoughts?
I agree with all your thoughts.
Okay. Lori? Thumbs up, all right. So I think what we, it seems like we'd like to do is, is hear back, and I'm kind of throwing this out just for not a better consensus, to do a little more work with building administration director facilities so that all the concerns are kind of worked through to their satisfaction so that they can come in and support the project as you present it in the next version.
But please understand that we're supportive of what you're doing and this is.
We want to make it work.
Yeah, absolutely. Just need to, we just need a little bit more detail before we're ready to rubber stamp it.
And, and, and it doesn't mean that everything has to be ironed out a hundred percent with, you know, with everybody because there's plenty, except we approve a lot of things, you know, that would just be, you know, pending, you know, working out the details with the administration or whoever's appropriate. So it doesn't need to be a hundred percent, but it's, I think we just feel it's a little premature to say yes. We, we say yes to the concept, right, and the idea, if that makes sense.
Does that work?
Yes, I wonder if it would be helpful to get a slightly, if you guys could potentially spend time like listing the main concerns that you have or you want me to be more clearly explaining next time I arrive.
We, we can all articulate that.
Shoot me an email and you and I will set up a time and we'll make sure that Miss Sankar and Mr. Murray are there. So we can, we'll walk through the concerns within the cafe itself.
Yeah, and, and what we can do is we can, we can send an email to Jim about the things we.
That they want to have answered.
Everything we've talked about is also recorded and we can go back into the questions that may have been asked and, you know, you got peppered with a lot of questions. So if you didn't catch them all, it's perfectly understandable. And we could talk, you know, talk with you through the administrative staff to make sure all the concerns really are addressed and then hopefully we'll be in a position to approve what you come back with.
Yeah, I can, I can say personally, thinking of them separately, composting and recycling is easier for me.
And it is meant to be thought that way. I'd say it's something that's purposefully meant, it's purposefully built so that it could be helpful when the time comes. But the truth is it's trying to sort of like Ms. Toasty said, saying that you're fixing sort of a smaller problem and a more of a, putting a patch on something that.
I think it's going to be easier for us to say recycling, we understand that and we, you know, the scope of issues is smaller. If we're trying to solve sort of the bigger problem as well now, given, you know, the sort of health concerns, sanitation concerns, education concerns, it's I think a more complicated project and probably one that is a little harder to, to approve. So I think if you, if you're able to focus, as Paul's saying, on the recycling component first, that probably is going to make it easier for us to vote.
And we're meeting every two weeks, so, so we can keep this moving quickly.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Good job.
Please don't walk away distracted. We're, we're excited about it. We just ask a lot of questions.
More details.
And don't feel obligated to stay.
Go to your next meeting.
I know you're already late.
All right, thanks, thank you for coming in, Nathan. Great project. All right, do we want to, and I know Miss Sankar is going to be fairly brief. Do we want to allow Miss Sankar and Ms. Arnold to do their presentations first and then go to our calendar? Just to allow them to be done a little bit quicker?
Sure. Yeah, I, I think we should have more conversations because she wasn't at the, Christina wasn't here for our last meeting, so I think.
Okay, fair enough.
Going over how we arrived there was probably the help.
All right, so I think, Kelly, that puts you up next.
Are you pulling up the presentation?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
So thanks for having me here tonight. I just wanted to give a brief overview. I know Mr. Terry's been keeping you updated on some of the conversations that we've been having at the high school site council over the course of mostly this school year, we started last school year. So just wanted to start with, this is a slide from a presentation that I've shared with three parent meetings that we've had over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, basically started that conversation with saying it's not, you know, whether to wait or unwait GPA isn't a conversation that's happening in isolation here in Ashland. It's a conversation that I've been having with my colleagues across the state. And this is just some thoughts from an article from my professional organization that's kind of summed up some of the thoughts we've had and the conversations we had as a site council when we started this conversation in terms of, you know, where do we need to be and thinking about that we're encouraging all students to reach their academic excellence. And we as a faculty have had a lot of conversation over the last couple of years regarding the rise of competition that we have seen among students. So those are just some points that I wanted to include that I think speak to what we stand for at Ashland High School and that we really want to provide students with an opportunity to take classes that are challenging, take classes that will help them reach their goals in the future and will help them balance what is important to them as adolescents who have a lot more going on than just school, even though from our point of view, you know, school is, is their number one job right now. So you can go to the next one.
Yep, I'm sorry.
So, you know, one of the things, and we had a lot of questions when we started talking about this and some members of the council. And I will say both teacher and parents brought this up as a topic as a request for us to talk about last spring. And so thinking about our school improvement plan, obviously based on the strategic plan, you know, where we were talking a lot about social emotional learning, student mental health equity. We had a lot of questions that came up about weighted GPA, why do we do it? How do we do it? What does it mean to us at Ashland High School? In our meetings with students and parents, we spent a little time talking about this is the role of site council and that, you know, the site council works together to research and explore different topics and from there decide whether or not we're going to make a recommendation to the school committee when it is something that's a policy that you would be responsible for voting on. So we, you know, our hope over the meetings that we've had recently was to educate people on that piece and to say that we're having some meetings to get your thoughts and inputs on where we are and what we do currently as a school. You know, I shared four questions that are, you know, not the only questions we had when we started, but some of the, some of the guiding questions we had about whether or not waiting GPA continues to be relevant at the high school level. You know, there's always ebbs and flows and I know, you know, we talked last night that we have faculty that do remember when we were unweighted and are currently looking into that history of when did we move to waiting and why. We taught, we talk a lot about, does our current system show that we value the work of all students? And does, you know, is there a message we're sending in terms of how we wait things to our students? That we value work at one level differently than we value at the other levels. We had a lot of conversation about, and this has been ongoing, about getting to the place where students are taking classes that are of interest to them or at the appropriate level and are not just a class that they're choosing to get an edge in their GPA. And, you know, we talked about would these changes, and we don't know the answer, would these changes, if, if we were to recommend a change, would there be an impact on student mental health? You know, we hear regularly from our counseling department and our teachers that the level of stress students are feeling, you know, whether they are, you know, recommended or override a class, you know, how do we get better at looking at that balance because students, the level of students in our counseling office seeking social emotional support because of how they feel in classes overwhelmed has continued to increase and it's continued to be a concern for us. You can go to the next one. So part of our process is, you know, again, I started by saying these are conversations we're having across, you know, I, I am part of a group that's email about forty principals in the Metro West area and, you know, probably fifteen to twenty of us come together once a month and talk about topics like these and how every school is, is approaching it. We share resources constantly. So we started with, you know, I had received resources from schools that had already, have always been unweighted, schools that have recently unweighted, so shared some of the information and research that the schools that, you know, three of the schools that had most recently gone through this process. And shared that with our site council and that was one of our, you know, first or second meetings this year is kind of just looking over what other schools had done. Not that we're trying to compare ourselves to these schools in any way because they're very different districts, but to have some conversations about what are the steps they took when they went through this process, which included a year or two of their site council to having discussions and some research, et cetera. And some things that we took away where we want to, we want to be having some conversations with the colleges and we want to be having conversations with our students and parents. And so we really just started with a very brief survey to the thirty-five colleges that our students apply to the most to get some feedback. It was very brief, it was three questions, I believe. Counseling department developed it just to kind of get a start for what do we want to look at. Again, we held some focus groups with our students, our tent there to ask, what do you know about weighted GPA? What do you understand about it? How does it impact how you make your choices as you move through high school? And then, you know, our tent was to get some of that same questioning done with our parent groups. I don't think that was as successful, but we were able to share some of the information we had collected at this point and really hear some good feedback from the parents that did participate. And then we have, you know, we have, as a group, I think we've talked about this at three meetings and have had discussion that with every question we ask, it brings us three more questions. And, you know, my experience with this site council is we are very thoughtful about making sure we're asking those questions and thinking about what is, what are the pros and cons for our students and wanting to be really thoughtful and take our time if we were going to make any recommendations. So, these are just some of the, oh, I just wanted to share a snapshot of some of the things, one of the questions that was asked for the college, of the colleges and, you know, we laughed because the colleges were going to say, you need to do what's best for you. But I shared this because that was one of the, the big pieces of feedback and questions that came to us as we've gone through the process that we've gone through over the last couple of months is, you know, we really need to get more information from colleges and see where they're at and where they're headed as we make any thoughts or changes or ask continuing questions. You know, we have gone down the, the road of should we, you know, should we be considered, you know, using weighted and unweighted? Should we be looking at other, you know, and, and parents have brought some of these questions to us. Should we be looking at things like limiting APs? Should we be having questions about what our override process? All those types of things are questions that, you know, we are being thoughtful about, is this even the right question we're asking right now? And should we be looking at other questions as well? So you can go to the next one. So really we, where we are at, we just came from a meeting where the, the agenda item for tonight was to share the feedback that we had received from students and parents. We were, I think halfway through having student meetings, the last time we had a site council meeting in January because we did those during our exam cycle and just finished parent meetings last night. And, you know, so our tent tonight was kind of talk about where we're at and what do we think our next steps should be. You know, we had talked about that we, out of area schools, the majority still do wait. It's, you know, out of, out of my responses, just reaching out to our local group, it was about twenty-two percent unwaited, seventy-seven percent do. You know, we had a lot of talk about our understanding as high school staff, how that most colleges have their own process for what they do and that they unwait and that because of the disparity of how schools wait, you know, we, and we have information about, you know, schools in our own, our own league, each of us do it differently. So really wanting to look at the college process and what colleges are looking for is kind of a next step for us. You know, we were able to see in some of our research early on, I said, one of our early questions was, is this going to help students make better choices for themselves and more related to their interests? And we do know from the schools that have already done it that they do see, especially the students that are looking to take really challenging classes that, that did not change for them. Those students were still choosing the most challenging classes regardless of whether, of the unwaiting. One of the questions that came up that we have done some follow-up with some colleges is the question of where that GPA and that rank as the school reports it falls in merit awards for students. So maybe, you know, so that some of the feedback we got was that perhaps colleges are using that information from the high schools when they talk about whether or not a student is going to get merit money and we don't want to have an impact on that, that might be negative.
But, but we've stopped ranking.
Desile, desile. Schools report, we, you know, our merit money goes to the students that are in the first decile.
GPs, yeah, some merit money is given out via.
Right, right, but we're doing, we're doing, we're doing decile rank, we're not, we're not doing rankings, so.
Correct.
Changes within that decile, I would assume, that, that shouldn't be a consideration, I would imagine, because we're not, you're thirty-fifth, you're, you know, we're not, we're not ranking it that way, right?
No.
But some schools strictly look at GPA to determine merit, not the class rank or.
Well, and some of the feedback we got was some schools look at where they fall in the decile.
Right, right.
For, for merit. And then we, you know, as I said, every, every time we ask a question, we get three more. So we've been talking about what does this mean for our honest awards, you know, Val and Sal? What does this mean for criteria for NHS? What does this mean for what Naviance looks like? You know, and how does, how do schools that have made those change because everyone uses Naviance? How does that impact them? Because if you haven't been in there yet, you get a scattergram of, you know, where your child falls based on their GPA and the colleges they're looking at.
Kelly, with, with the waiting we do, I think you said it, but I want to confirm. Our way of waiting isn't necessarily the same way somebody else is waiting, right?
Correct, very correct.
So, you know, I guess if, if there's not a standard way to wait across schools, then that's why, that's one of the reasons why the school, the colleges have to have their own way because they have to somehow normalize something that's not normalized.
Right.
Right, so that also then, you know, is, is something to consider that it's not just waiting versus unwaiting. Everybody else is waiting, but we're all waiting it differently.
Right.
So there's not a consistency there, so. So, going strictly off GPA across, you know, for students that are applying to a school, they have to be doing something, just not just straight GPA to compare an Ashland student to a Holliston, to a Hopkins, and to, to the other schools as well.
They're, right, they're looking at our school profile along with our transcript and what we offer, what students are able to take, how rigorous of a course load is, is the student taking in relation to their skill level.
Kelly, when you guys got feedback from the colleges, and this may be one of the new questions that you have right as you move forward, but were any of the questions relative to, you know, kind of where at, how they, how they determined the rigor of Ashland? Because obviously, I know, like, if, and this was new to me as my son was applying to college this year, that they, pretty much every school he applied to stripped, strips down that GPA and they re, they add points, their own points back in based on honors or AP courses. And so, you know, what his stripped down GPA was, was not necessarily what they found his GPA was, but their GPA wasn't necessarily our GPA. So, they kind of figured out for, for themselves. And so, he still got extra points for those honors classes and those AP classes in the eyes of the colleges he was applying to. But I know kind, they may not give Ashland the same amount of points for an honors class. It's a different high school, we may get more than some high schools based on the rigor of our program. So, do you have any understanding or information from the schools and how they determine that rigor? And kind of where, where we fit in and just kind of, if they're looking at us without any weight in those GPAs, you know, and it, this kind of, I don't know if it's a loaded question or complicated question, but I, I think it would be helpful to hear some of, because we have a rigorous program. I think Ashland High School is seen as, is, is a very rigorous and competitive program, whether you're in CP2 or whatever, whatever level you're in. And so, I think it would be helpful if the colleges were able to share any of kind of that thought process as well too, you know?
I can't answer that question. I would, I would say that I would assume Mr. McGann could answer that question. In, in terms of one of the things we talked about, you know, helping students understand is, you know, not only does your transcript go to the school, but our school profile. And I did see one of the pieces of feedback that was a, a comment that one of the colleges made was, you know, Ashland has a, a good profile that does a really good job of explaining what your school offers and what your school does. And that's one of the things we look for, we want to be able to understand what your school does and, and you do it well. But, yeah, those are.
Yeah, I mean, that question may not be able to be answered because every school does it a little differently. But that's certainly like, I think, a piece of information that's helpful for people to understand. Because I didn't even, I didn't know that until I went through the process, you know, with, with my own son. But it's, but it's refreshing to know that they added, they added back in on their own, whether we put it there or not, that, that extra boost.
Well, I have lots, I mean, I was in the meeting last night, so there's clearly a, a lot of questions. And what struck me is right now, we have a lot of qualitative discussion happening. And I need more quantitative discussion. I think we need more facts and there's a lot of questions and I'd like to understand all the questions. I'd really like to understand from an admissions office perspective, especially outside of even where our students go, like, because it's all over the board, what those perspectives are and how they would impact our students. Definitely, the merit money is a, is a concern. Because there are students who have received scholarships from Ashland that was based on rank. And so, how does that waiting or unweighting? I mean, I know it's one of the many questions, but I think it would be really helpful, and I know you, you're having focus groups or whatever, but there's so many, clearly a lot of engaged parents. So, it'd be really great to really get a good list of data that we could collect, understand, figure out a way to formulate and present. I mean, you're very brave to have gone in front of all those parents with, you know, kind of beginning information. I think there's a lot of information that I would want to understand as a parent of a high school, an incoming high schooler, and how that would impact their, you know, going wherever they choose to go. Because from my perspective, we want to give our students the best shot they have, right? And so, while the waiting or unweighting may only make a difference to however many, you want to give those kids their best shot. And I know everybody in this room wants that. So, I, I would just say if there's a way we can formulate and collect data so it's, it's more going to give us, I guess, something that we could formulate an opinion on that's not just people's opinions or anecdotal to the extent, because a lot of it's hard to measure. And so, I'm looking for what is measurable data that people have collected who have been through it? Or does it exist? And I don't know the answer to that.
I want to say, Marcy, you're making me feel really good about something I shared with Ms. Inka earlier today, which was that I thought this committee was really going to be looking for evidence that demonstrates if we're making a change, somehow it's going to positively impact kids.
Right, right.
Right, and, and it's not just about what we might do, but what's the goal of a change? And how do we know if we make the change, we're going to achieve the goal? And I think those are all really difficult questions that, you know, it's way too early in the process to have answers to. But as Kelly says, you know, every time you ask one question, you get three more and they're all good, you know?
Well, and that's why I want, that's why I was asking those other questions is because people will say, oh, everybody else is waiting, but does that matter if everybody's waiting differently, right? So, how do we, you know, put context around any of the data points to make it so we can judge those data points appropriately? Just to, just to say that sounds on its surface, hey, if everybody else is doing it, we're going to stand out and it may not be a good way, but, you know, if the colleges have to figure that out anyway because everybody's waiting differently, then, you know, maybe that's, you know, maybe that's not such a valid data point or, or it is, right? I don't know. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm going to look at it from the point of, the same way we look at, we look at our entire student body and not just this, you know, the thing about National Honor Society, all these different, that's valid things we need to look at, but, you know, our student body is, you know, that's a very small subset of our student body, right? And so, how does this impact our entire student body? And almost, you know, I'd love to say that everything we do has a positive impact on every student. It doesn't, there's a lot, a lot of times it's a balance. And we do something and, you know, the student, you don't get, you know, it has, as, I don't want to say negative impact, but it doesn't impact that student as positively as it impacts this other group. And we have to weigh that, right? And I think that goes to what you're saying is, how do we go from a very passionate, because I've, I've conversations with some people who are asking me about it, right? They're very passionate about it. But I don't know that their passion is based on anything other than wanting their kid to have the opportunities you talked about. But is that a fallacy, right? Or is it trending to be a fallacy? You know, if, if you went back, you know, ten years, what was that percentage of unweighted schools, right? Probably less. Is it trending, is it, is it trending towards doing this? And should we, even if we don't make a change now, be looking at how we adopt something that might be?
Yeah, I, I will say this, it did take on a life of its own. It was typically, and we talked tonight at site council, that we have had a lot of things that we have talked about and, and looked to make changes at the school and some that we have brought here to school committee. And often there are conversations that are, happen over the course of two or three years or at least a whole year. And, you know, after one or two meetings, this was, so I don't think in, in other situations, we would have been seeking information or holding meetings to say, this is what we've been doing, this is where we're at as early on until we had some more questions answered. But we had to address it on a larger scale because it was such a large question.
But you have so many parents who are so vested in it, like, take their questions, right? And let's explore the answers to the questions. And I think, you know, what struck me in the conversation last night is there seems to be a real focus on kids and their stress and their perceptions. And so, I think I need to spend some time with Jen Cutler and understand, you know, what, what we're doing for counseling and all that. But that's what struck me, like, okay, is, is changing this going to change that? I don't know. So.
And those are the conversations we're having.
Yeah, so I think, again, I just think there's a lot of questions that have to be.
And to that point, this is kind of a process question, but I have, I was on the Zoom last night as well too, and I had a sticky note pad in front of me, so I just filled it up with my questions. Because that was all I had and I didn't have time to rewrite it today, so I just brought the pad with me. But the questions that, you know, that we have, or, and I don't know if you've already determined a process for this, for either parents to submit questions. I know you're, this conversation is going to be ongoing. I know you last, you mentioned last night, you're going to be seeking input and getting greater input from students and gathering some more information from that front. But in terms of the questions we have as a committee, what's the, should we share them with Mark? And he can bring them to site council, what are your thoughts?
I think for, for me, and I want to make sure Lori gets a chance to get in here too, is, you know, I think the point of this discussion tonight was for Kelly to let you know what's going on in more detail. You know, there is.
It may not be time to submit questions.
Yeah, there, there's an ongoing dialogue around the site council. You know, the, the agenda had other things on it that we never got to today because this conversation took an hour and twenty minutes and then Kelly wisely said, I don't think we're going to get to those other things yet. You know, I, I think if you have questions, I mean, my view is, send them to Kelly is things that, you know, because I'm not at every meeting, I, I try to get to them all, but I missed a couple when we were talking about this. Share them with her, right, by email, things you're thinking about. Because I think, A, they probably have already been discussed to some degree.
I mean, my guess is many of them have, yeah.
Right, Kelly can filter those and, and I'm sure you've got something that nobody's talked about. It'll enable them to sort of think about it. I tried earlier today to give them my two cents and it was the comment I made to, in response to Marcy's comment a minute ago, of what I thought the committee would be looking for. And it was, you know, really said, look, I think if we're making a change, we've always been driven by what's best for kids. What we're going to need is some, something that shows us if we're making a change, that what we're doing is best for kids, right? And I don't know how that's going to be defined, it's going to be a million different things. And I think Paul, you're right, like, the chances of hitting it for all two hundred or two hundred pluses kids in a, in a given graduating class or all eight hundred and something in the building, it probably isn't going to be that, you know, it's not going to be perfect. It's not perfect now, it won't be perfect whatever we do. But if we, we're going to want evidence that says, if you do this, it should achieve this outcome. And that to, to focus a bit on what are we trying to achieve? And then, how are we going to figure out whether this makes a difference at all? So, I think, you know, for where things are, my guess is this dialogue is going to go on for a while. We were joking at the end of the meeting today, said, you know, it's probably the parents that are going through pre-K enrollment now that might see something change.
Yeah, well, I mean, sorry, just one thing about, for me also, because I do this at work as well, it's not just about a change that, whether it has a positive impact, it's also, we do something, right? It's not that we're not doing something and we're going to add, we're doing something. And can we evaluate its impact, you know? And just because we've been doing something, it doesn't mean we should continue to do something. Even if it doesn't demonstrate, you know, because I don't want to put the hurdle in that if it doesn't have some significant or, you know, impact, you know, positive impact that we shouldn't make a change. But if we are doing something, we should also understand the value of doing that thing, right? And so, just to, I want to add that in there.
Fair point.
It's, it's, it's also about, hey, it's not like we're going from zero and we're adding, you know, we're looking at adding something that, but we're, we are doing something. And just the same way we evaluate, we should be evaluating our programming and everything like that. We should be evaluating the things we do. So, this, I think, is a, is a, is an opportunity to do that. The other component is, do you have anything that kind of lays out, you know, not, not a timeline as like, hey, this date, but a process? Because part of me wants to say, hey, I have some questions, but I want to, I want to throw them out at the right time, right? I don't want to, if, if I, so, I, and I, I appreciate you coming in and giving us the, where things are, but just an overall, if there was something that says, hey, we, this might change, but here's the vision of the, the steps we would take before we would even make a decision and where we would. So, that way we know what, you kind of lay out a journey and we understand where you are on the journey. Because we have this discussion and, you know, I still don't know, would we want to have some, are we going to try to vote on something, you know, at the end of the year or beginning of next year? I don't, I don't know that where, where that, what the journey looks like. And like I said, the journey might change, but in your current view, maybe having something that says, hey?
I think typically when we start a year, we have, you know, a plan to, with a, a larger topic, we have a plan to talk about it for the year and, and come by the end of the year with some sort of resolution of whether or not we're going to make any kind of recommendation or not, something that's bigger. You know, I think about more, something recent in terms of community service, that was a three-year discussion before we felt comfortable making a recommendation.
This, this one seems like a big, like, like one that's a, a tall task for a single school year.
Yeah, so, no, we do not have a roadmap because again, a lot of, you know, every question brings a new one.
If I may, Kelly, I just say, I think the, the next point in the dialogue that we were going to get to in site council that we didn't was next steps.
Yeah.
Right, and so, there was starting to be a dialogue of at least, what do we want to look at next?
That'll be next month.
And, and that's what I was getting at, and that's why I said, not a timeline, not a, not a journey timeline, but hey, here are the steps we want to take. And I, you know, until we get to this point, I can't tell you, you, you may not be able to tell us an estimate on how long a step will take, but just kind of a, a flow of, hey, these are the types of things we want to go through to get there regardless of the timeframe. Just so I could better wrap my head around.
Let me try to get Lori a chance because I keep threatening. Lori, do you have anything you want to, to share? You do have to unmute first though.
Oh, my gosh, I've been thinking about this for like twenty years. And I've been on the site council and I, I know it's been a conversation. And, and there's been a lot of fear, stressful conversations too, even when we went to the decile system instead of the rankings. I mean, there's a lot rest in on this for lots of different people. My kid, in full transparency, my kids are at the other end of all of this. They already got into great schools, they already had their education and I would say even benefited in some ways from the system. We've had merit money, we've, we've had shortened college experiences because of all the additional credits and so forth and so on. On the other hand, I really also have always felt like, you know, just the system we have is not right. Not we, us, Ashland, but just one that we've all kind of found ourselves right in the middle of this sort of merit system. And, I mean, are we who we say we are and, and what we say we're doing if the focus, the system is really built on, you know, how many feathers can you collect by the end so that you can get into the best whatever? Which is a, a concern of all of ours, including mine. But I'm not sure that that, the person who easily gets an A in the top class and it's going to position them well for the merit, et cetera, et cetera, is any more deserving than the person who is trying their best in the CP2 and working really hard. And I, I think it also takes the focus off of, you know, just education in general, like learning and love of learning and also learning how to go through your whole life and not constantly find yourself in this kind of system where you have to earn points to get to the next level. It's like some kind of video game, you know, you're just leveling up with all these things that you're collecting on the way without really a true connection to your, what you're even doing there. So, and I also don't think we're ever going to answer the question, you know, if we ever decide to make a change or take a risk, it's probably going to be without having the level of comfort that we would all want to know, well, how is this going to improve things? And can you be sure? Unless we're the last to do it and we've seen everybody else do it and get great results. But I think, you know, I, I think that the reason why we're having this conversation and why it's been ongoing for so long is that, at least to some level, we all know that there's something a little off about it, even though we also understand that there's a lot of fear involved in taking ourselves out of that. And certainly none of us wants to place our children at a disadvantage. So, I, you know, I don't have an answer, I'm just saying that I think something about how it works doesn't sit well with me and it never really has. And I don't know the answer to what's better, but I think other people feel the same way or we wouldn't be constantly having this conversation. And I, I do also think that, you know, whether there are baby steps that can be taken or whether it just has to be a hard, you know, give it a try. But I think it is going to be one of those things that if it comes to the decision-making point, it's going to be a risk. And we, with any risk, we may find that we're way better off than, than we were before we took it. And we may find that it was a mistake. But I certainly don't love, there's a lot of mixed messages out there. I remember even, it's a long time now, but when my kids were touring colleges, I mean, we would go to the high school and listen to the talks about picking your courses. You should pick the class that's appropriate for you and at your level. You should pick the class that's appropriate for you and at your level. And then we'd go tour schools and they'd say, you know, if you wanna come to this school, you better take the highest class that your high school offers and you better get an A and you better be number one, kind of, you know what I mean? These kids are just getting so many, it, there's a lot of pressure. And I'm not sure that it serves them well in the long run, even if they do get the merit. Like, so what if at the end of the day, they haven't learned anything and they're miserable? So, and, and again, and I say that as someone who has, uh, you know, benefited from a lot of that. And I don't have regrets about that, but I, I do, um, I, I do want to make sure that we are doing things for the re- right reasons and that we're in line with the values that we say that we have.
Thanks, Lori.
Really, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I didn't, I didn't share any teacher feedback regarding this, this topic. And I think something you just spoke to is very much what teachers are, are feeling right now is a, a, a very big increase in students who are taking a class just to take it. And, and, and the teachers want the reward to be the knowledge and the love of learning and have found that that is, um, in a, not there in a way it probably was there ten years ago, eight years ago. And that it's more about the number.
So if I, I can, I think the purpose of this conversation was to let the full committee know kind of what's going on. We're certainly, we don't have a recommendation, we're way away from debating the final decision on it. And so my sense is that we probably should kind of leave the conversation there. But, um, Kelly, are you okay receiving feedback or just even emails?
Sure, definitely.
Sort of about questions, because I think the more information you have about what the school committee's gonna be interested in hearing about. Um, and you're certainly welcome to send to me, I will do my best to afford it.
Whatever is easiest for, that's why I asked the process.
Why don't you send to Kelly, copy me on them?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
The site council minutes mentioned focus groups. Are the focus groups the ones you already had? Or are you convening more?
No, no.
No more?
Although, no, actually, I, I will say, uh, what those groups showed us is that we need to find ways to reach out to, to more students and parents.
And I would-
But we have to talk about how that, what that's gonna look like.
I would say, and my sense is that there's probably an increasing body of understanding going on out there right now. But there's a lot of misunderstanding out there. I mean, I've gotten at least a few questions directly that clearly demonstrate people think it's gonna happen tomorrow.
Right.
And, and I've been pretty clear, I will say, as I spoke maybe a little out of turn, just saying at today's state council, I said, I think it's highly unlikely that we would be doing anything sort of that affects a kid who's in the school now. You know, that it's more likely track would be for an incoming class of ninth grader or something like that. And I said, no promises, but, but the way we've implemented things over time, I said, I think that's a fairly safe bet. So, Kelly, thank you for coming in. Anything else you want from the committee now?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you for undertaking this process too. It's in having the parent groups and student groups, and sure, there will be more to come. And I appreciate the thoughtful process you're undergoing.
Actually, Kelly, just one question for the, for those focus groups and stuff. How do you, how do you feel you reached, uh, did you feel you reached a good, uh, cross-section of-
Which is why we know that we have to do more.
That's also part of my concern, same concern we had when we talked about program in Mendez is, I don't wanna just hear from, from these very engaged families and, I, I want, because we wanna look at it holistically.
Yeah.
And how, how do we do that?
Yeah, we had the same conversation this morning. If you didn't catch our answers, no.
And, and, and with this is probably, is also an educational piece, because those other families, they had a GPA. What are you even talking about, right?
I, I received a lot of those emails.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I obviously, just waiting to your point earlier, like, I think the high school I graduated from, we had a thirteen-point scale. My GPA was like eleven something, you know? And I still don't know what that meant.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Kelly. Kristy, next up.
Hi, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Good.
Thanks for coming in.
No, absolutely. Thank you for having me. I, um, I'm just giving a brief update on what's going on in the English Language Education Department.
That was code for, don't ask me that many questions, right? You, you, no, you totally right that you know what happens up here. So, sorry, Kristy, go ahead.
So just an update on where we are. The last time I was with you, we, I had some goals for the year. And so it's an update on some of those things and some of the great things that are happening. I started with the numbers because that's always important. And so I put where we were in, in June SIMs, so the end of last year, and then where we are currently.
Sims is just for Marcy and for anyone else, it's just the data we present to the state. The, the, that's the actual data at the end of the year of where we ended.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Akron and Police. Um, and so for, at that time, um, and so the first box is multilingual learners. And what that number represents are the number of students within the district whose first language is something other than English. So whatever they put on their registration, and it's reported in our data management system, those nine hundred and thirty-three students, currently nine hundred and twenty-six students, speak another language at home as their primary language. There's more that speak other languages in the home as well as English or whatever it is, but it's not their primary language. So the number's even greater of multilingual families, if you will. Of those students, two hundred and eleven are currently in the English Language Education Program. And that's pre-K to twelve, so they are considered English language learners. They have, um, direct English language instruction as part of their day. Then the next number, the one ninety-six.
Kristy, just for you, the, maybe, maybe you explained it and I just didn't get it.
Yep.
I'm looking at those two first lines and they went like this, right? One went down, not a lot, the other one went up by a fair amount. But I would expect them to kind of almost be in a similar trend, but so, so may, help me, help me understand why that wouldn't be-
Not necessarily. They, they, um, not necessarily.
So two things, one, dealing with June data, which also includes students who may have graduated.
Correct.
Or moved on, so they're not part of this year's numbers. So the numbers that have come in at nine twenty-six, the, the new students could be English learners. So, so they're not apples to apples.
Okay, okay, because I was looking at the learner-
Some of them are different people, right?
So then it would also say more of the multilingual families, multilingual children are qualifying for the English language program. So that, so if you looked at it that way.
So within that, we, we qualify, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two, yeah, two factors.
Because what, why, I didn't expect them to be perfectly parallel. Going in opposite directions just struck me as, as odd, but.
And then, um, for, former English learners or fels are students who have exited out of the English language education. So they are now considered English proficient, if you will. Um, and we monitor those students for four years. And so that number, that one ninety-six are the students who are within that four-year period. So there are more students who have exited out, but we're not keeping track of those numbers in this data.
Is there any kind of data about, it's like an average period of time that a student would be receiving EL services? Or too variable to?
Average, five to seven years?
Okay.
Ish, give or take.
It probably depends on when they enter.
Yeah, and I, I, yeah, I understand there's a lot that goes into that.
There are many, there are many factors, but that's the, what the state guidelines are. That's what we're expecting around that. And then, so then I have the numbers broken down by the schools, high school, middle school, Mendez, Warren. And that Warren number, June doesn't include the incoming K students. So that's why that number goes up. So it doesn't quite, and I kept looking at it, I'm like, that doesn't make sense. But that's why, because we don't report on the incoming K class.
Is that the same with Pittaway? Because their number went up pretty-
So that, again, kids move.
Gotcha.
Right? And so, um, there are probably a few more at Pittaway this year than there were before.
So with, with that Warren.
So last year, so that's-
But you, but you also shifted some, so, so an increase is still an incre- I'm, I'm trying to grab my-
It's about the same of what Warren had last year. It's around the same.
So, so, so when you're, you're not counting the second graders at the June, so you're not counting the second graders that would now be Mendez students at the end of June?
Correct.
So, so you, you only have two, you, two grades, okay, that, that's why, all right.
Yep, because the shift happened and then-
The shift happens, but you, you don't have, uh, the, you don't-
New cohort, yeah.
Yep.
So you only had two, two grades as opposed to three?
Yes.
Gotcha, now I get you.
And then the number at the bottom, new to US schools, so that's a number that's also reported to DESI. And it's students within their first year, so like twelve months. So right now, that's at fifty-nine students within the district that are-
Is that, is that a new reporting statistic and that's why we don't, don't have it for last year?
Um, it's not new reporting, it's new to the slide.
And, and that, when you say new to US schools, that's not somebody entering pre-K or K?
It actually does include K, a K English learner, that does count for them.
Okay.
But not the pre-K.
But even if they lived in the US for three years and then they just start, they each into the school system?
Yep.
That's new, okay.
They're still considered new because it's their first time in schools. And they're an English learner. So then this slide just talks about the languages, because I know this has come up before. So I, I, again, digging out of, um, out of IPASS, our information system, and this is what's reported as their primary language in the home. So the top language is Portuguese. Then I had to compile the Indian languages and dialects into one section to see actually how many that was. And that's a hundred and ninety-eight. Then we have Spanish, Russian, Arabic, Chinese, which includes Mandarin and Cantonese, Romanian and French. And then the bottom box are all the other languages that are less than ten. Many of those are one, two, five, something like that. But I thought that was, um, interesting to look at the number of languages spoken in, in district. So then I will just talk about some of the highlights that are going on at the high school level. Last year, a new EL teacher was hired and that really helped us to be able to separate classes by level. And really, they, they created curriculum to really teach the students at their language levels and really differentiate by the courses. Um, and so that's been going really well. Uh, middle school, uh, one of my goals was to have some dedicated collaboration time between the EL teachers and the content teachers that they work with. And so that's been happening. Mendez and Warren, uh, they have data team meetings where the classroom teachers, like the third, fourth grade teachers are looking at data to make decisions about instruction for students. And the EL teachers are participating in those conversations so that we're looking at the student holistically to make decisions for those kiddos. And that's been going really well. And those are pictures of high school kiddos. And then K twelve, um, there's a new progress monitoring software tool that we're using. It's called Flashlight three sixty. And what it is, it's a speaking and listening tool that the students are using regularly within their classroom. And the teacher's able to do progress monitoring and measure the speaking and writing skills and see how they're progressing throughout the year. And actually, um, Flashlight three sixty, there was a study at John Hopkins that just came out today. I got an email about that saying that flat, using Flashlight three sixty is making a significant difference with students in learning the, the expressive language piece. So that was exciting that, and the teachers all are using it, K through twelve, they love it. They actually, Flashlight three sixty, I'm one of the ambassadors, because I'm telling everyone about this great program and it's, it's going really well to make decisions for our English learners. Access twenty twenty-four is the state testing that our English language learners do every January, February. It's a test for listening, speaking, reading and writing. We call it the MCAS for English learners, if you will, because that's their year-to-year measurement. So those, um, results will come back in May and we'll be able to look at that data compared to last year and continue to make educational decisions for our students.
So is that, that data kind of similar to like growth percentiles, but in, in EL?
Yes, yes. So in the listening, speaking, reading and writing. And so they give them the student growth percentiles, like what they should make. What the, so that they could exit the EL program in five to, I think it's five to seven years. So it's like, this is what the growth should look like over time. And if students aren't making the growth, then we make plans for them, similar to like the MCAS. If the students aren't making growth, what's the plan? How are we gonna make sure that these students are successful?
And how are we, sort of, I don't know if there's a, like, I understand the student growth percentile, fifty percent is what you expect in a year. You know, and, and we have many of our schools or grade levels where we're doing better than that in certain areas. Is there something comparable here? And if so, what does it tell us about how we've been doing?
I don't know about the fifty percent percentile, but I know, so for each student, they give them a targeted goal of what they should get the next year. Again, depending on when they arrive, their age, their starting level and like what the growth should be. So it's more based on the students individually.
So maybe the better way for me to ask that question is, you know, are, are our students hitting those targets that are being set for them at a fairly high rate, you know, or one that, that you are satisfied with?
I would say right now, yes. I think there's pockets and areas that we're working on. There's a term called long-term EL, so English learners who have been in the program, what we would say, long-term, like, it's, maybe it's too long. And like targeting those students and what can we do differently for those students? But overall, there's been good growth, yeah.
I just have a quick question about the Flashlight three sixty. So is this kind, is this a program where the EL teachers can go in and say, and kind of set the levels for a student of where they should start learning? Or is it, they all kind of start in the same place and the program is built to determine what they need to do next? Is it kind of self-directed or teacher-directed?
So it's, it's very teacher-directed and it's not like, um, where, it's, it's not like an I-ready where they, they're just going through standards, right? Like, they're going through like first grade standards. This is more where, like, so the benchmark, all the students kind of in the elementary got the same benchmark. So it's a prompt, there's a picture and they're asked, okay, describe what you see in the picture. So then every student is at their level. So if they're a newcomer, level one, and they can say ball, tree, house, that's what they're saying, then the teacher is scoring it that way. If they're a little higher, then they're saying phrases. If they're higher, they're saying sentences. And, and going, growing the language that way. So then the teacher can then say, okay, this group of students, we really need to work on vocabulary or transition words or something like that, so then they can give them more practice in that way.
So they can set the program to say, these students need to work on these skills as, as they-
And so then they have practice that way. And then they're using it to inform, then their direct instruction is more on that. So it's less of an instructional tool, but more of a prac- is a practice. And another really good thing about it is the students are practicing speaking into it. And the access testing is speaking, so if you go back a page to the picture, the kids, um, in the top picture, they're actually on the program there. And so they're getting practice in speaking. And what I've found, what the teachers are telling me is now those kids, when it's their turn to talk, they're saying more, because now they've had real practice in speaking and speaking. And one of the biggest problems or issues, if you will, with English learners is they're not, they don't have enough, there's not enough practice in speaking. So this tool is giving them practice. Now, everyone in the class has a turn to say something versus one at a time and calling on. And the hope is that that will then translate into their classrooms. And now they're raising their hand and they're more con- confident in, in speaking.
Thank you.
Yep, so then this was, um, family engagement and partnership. Lexicate is the interpretation, um, um, product that we're using. And I, I did some data on that. We had from September till now, over four, five hundred calls and meetings. I broke it down, special education is also using this with translations, interpretations for their meetings. So they had a hundred and twenty-seven meetings with interpretation, or calls, if you will. And then everyone else is three hundred and eighty-nine, just to give you some numbers. And the fall EL Family Night was a huge success. Thank you for those who came. The next one will be in the spring at Warren. We'll focus on the summer programs, um, summer activities that families can get involved with and how to read the access scores for the families, because they'll get a score report that's kind of complicated. But like, what does that mean for your student? So we'll be looking at that. I'm still, uh, working on the LPAC, which is the English Language Parent Advisory Council, and looking for leadership, um, for that. So the leadership needs to be a parent of a current English learner or a former English learner. And I'm also participating in a series from the Federation for Children with Special Needs, a newcomer family series. It's about welcoming newcomers, uh, wel- It's about welcoming, um, newcomers, um, welcome sent is, in the notes, there's all the lists of workshops in there. I can't remember them off the top of my head, but it's, I've gone to two so far and it's really good. And I'm looking forward to building that welcoming environment, um, and working on how to welcome families into town. Along with, um, Caitlin who presented, I met with her yesterday.
That was, that was, that was what I queued up.
Yep, I met with her yesterday.
I went, went and got the email and I wanted to check on that, see if you.
Um, and she's working on, uh, a project with the, with the library. And so we're, we're going to help support her in, in that. And, and Esmer and I, we've been working on that.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Laurie? No, you're good. Okay. Thanks, Chrissy. Appreciate you coming in. All right, let's, um, go back to item number one. It'll feel better when we get past number one, go back to five, I guess. Um, review and approve, good night, guys. Um, review and approve correction to school year calendar 2425. Do you want me to tee this up, Jim, or you want to?
Sure, you can tee it up while you want.
All right. So in our last. Did I have to separate the two of you?
No, we were just looking at the Google Drive because ours looked different to make sure we had the same box.
So at, at the last, um, meeting we had, we approved a school calendar. And then there was an oversight in that calendar in terms of when the April break was scheduled. It was showing the week before. And so Jim caught that afterwards. And what that did was it meant that the Friday before, which previously fell within that school vacation week, now is a holiday we've recognized in the past, meaning Good Friday. So we needed at a minimum to make sure we're approving the correct calendar, showing that as a holiday. Um, we had a lot of conversation about sort of using holidays and things last time. Um, Tina, you weren't here.
I was not here last.
So quick summary on that is.
But she said you.
But I did watch the meeting. So you don't have to summarize, for my benefit, you don't have to summarize. Thank you though.
Um, so I think the only question we have here is, is the, first, we have to at least again technically approve the, the corrected calendar. The one point I think is fair for further discussion, at least in my humble opinion, is does, because that ultimately pushes the last day of the school year out, one more day. Does it change anybody's opinion about the two days right after New Year's? Which the vote was in favor of extending the break to, there was the second and third. I assume would be those two days, um, to the point where people want to revisit that. I'm not gonna, since I voted sort of against those days, I feel like, you know, I said my piece on it. But for those of you who were supportive, which, you know, obviously you weren't here. Um, you know, it's a question, I think of like, nope, we still want to leave it that way. We're fine. But I don't think we have to have the conversation about holidays generally again. Um, so I don't know who wants to chime in.
I mean, if there was, uh, we've all said our piece on some of these things. So not the holidays necessarily, but anything for, you watched it, you deserve, you put you on that first.
Kind of like many of you, I don't, I didn't have a super strong opinion about it. One thing, you know, that, that I was thinking about and, and did speak to a couple of parents. I didn't have the opportunity in to, uh, there was no ASH PAC meeting. So this wasn't a discussion I had with anybody outside of a few personal friends, um, who have students with disabilities. One thing that came to mind was, is two weeks too long of a break. But conversely, is coming back for two days and then transitioning back in for just two days, then transitioning back out for two days, then transitioning back in for, to kind of go back full-time. Would that be more difficult for our students with disabilities? And I think it's six and one half dozen of the other. I think for some, a full two-week break is going to be better. For some, coming back for two days is going to be better. And there's no kind of quick, but that's just my thought process. That was the one thing that I was thinking of in terms of, is this going to impact some of our students negatively to have that long of a break? And I don't think I, you know, landed solidly on a yes or a no. I think it's different for every, every student. So, um, you know, I, 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 I think looking at the, the thought in terms of those two days tend to be uh, very low attendance days. I think looking at our calendar, the, the last day of school is going to be, probably the last two days of school will be super low attendance days. And so I think it may be a trade-off when we're looking at the strictly from the attendance piece. Um, but I don't have a, a, a strong opinion on it, um, either way.
I mean, I can tell you, even after the meeting, I didn't, I didn't like it. You know, I, I still don't like it.
You're looking for a better answer, right?
Yeah, I mean, because, yes, I'm the proponent of, I, I really didn't like coming back on, you know, that early because, you know, that, New Year's is not a daytime thing. It's, it's a nighttime thing. So coming back doesn't allow for, unless it's a local, unless your family's local, you're not spending the time with your family, right? So, um, that said, especially how this lays out, right? The way it lays out right now, getting rid of those two days allows us to have the 180th, eightieth day before Juneteenth, right? And if we have one snow day, still completing it in that week, right? So I, I don't know. I, I was almost regretting going with the flow, uh, last time and, and voting for it, even though I like to say.
Tried to stop you.
No, you, you were, you were, you were too late. You were the la, you were the last vote. So I, I mean, you know, and I, I asked about, I was thinking to myself, do we revisit it here? I'd, I'd almost be willing to reverse that based on how this lays out, right? Uh, that we can end on the, on the 20th, even if we had one snow day, which is basically probably what we're going to have this year, hopefully.
Maybe we should just vote on like no snow.
Right, and because, yeah, the Mendez students from a, from a heat perspective are not going to be a problem, right? But everybody else, you know, that last week in June, could be, it could be, could be fine, but it could be brutal, right? And I don't, I, I don't, I don't love it. I'd probably lean towards flip-flopping and going back to the other one, especially how it lays out now, but.
Anybody, I mean, we can, we can do this two ways. One, um, you can get a motion to do one thing or the other, and then just have the dialogue or get everybody else to chime in.
I'm not, I'm not going to die on that.
Okay. Marcy, anything you, you know, if you honor?
I just, I would leave it. I would leave it like it is. I mean, I think we had a robust discussion. I think there was evidence to, you know, keep the days like they were in January. We cannot predict the weather. It could be hot in September and we could have to call day. I would just leave it how it is and then we move on with our lives.
Uh, moving on, making decisions sometimes is a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the counter though is, so say we have no snow days. Not a single student's going to be in there on the 20th. Yeah, but why, why, what?
On the 23rd.
Yeah, they're, they're not going to, they're not going to come back. Why, why, you know?
Well, I mean, last year, the school calendar ended on a Monday and plenty of people came back. So I think, you know.
But it wasn't this late though, you know, when you're, so, I don't know.
Let's see, let's just see if Laurie wants to chime in at all here.
It was the 17th last year. I know because I was one of those people who pulled their kids out of school. So I mean, all I'm saying is, parents are going to choose to do what parents are going to choose to do. I think, I think we made a choice. I think we should stick with our choice and that's my opinion. I rest.
Madam Tostie?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was tossing it up in the, when we made the decision, six and one, half a dozen of the other. But I also feel like since we've made it, uh, if, if I had been hearing from people that they didn't like that or were disappointed, I haven't had a single email about any of it. Um, I, I had some verbal feedback in the beginning that people were looking forward to that extended break. So I don't, I don't have a real reason to change my vote. Um, and it's been out there for a couple of weeks. I don't know if people have started to make plans. So I'm, I'm going to keep my position, not that I ever felt strongly about it to begin with, but I have no reason to change it either.
All right, let's, why don't we just get a motion?
It's not been out, we voted, but nothing was published. So I kept on getting people asking me, when are we going to get it? When are we going to get it even afterwards? But, so nobody knew about it, unfortunately.
All right, why don't we, why don't we get a motion on table? Um, it sounds like the motion's probably going to be in favor of adopting the corrected calendar as presented by Jim, which is to keep us closed on January 2nd and 3rd. Um, and to recognize Good Fri, Friday holiday on the 18th of April. That's, okay. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote with Ms. Tostie being virtual. Marcy?
Aye. Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
I'm going to join you on the no side, but we're, we're going to lose, but that, that's totally fine. I'd like to say I'm not going to die on that.
Laurie?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to maintain my position as a no on that. All right, three to two, calendar is set, moving along. And if nothing else, as Marcy said, we've got a decision, we can tell people what the deal is.
There you go.
All right, um, Assistant Superintendent's update, Michael.
I, I really just wanted to, um, bring to your attention some pretty great data that I was just able to, to see, um, after our winter benchmark assessments were, were done specifically at Warren. Um, as you know, we've adopted iReady, um, from K to eight this year, uh, to do all of our assessment data. Um, and it's now a, a common assessment, which is going to be fantastic. And we can watch how our students are progressing from K through eight. Uh, but in particular, the, uh, ELA data from Warren is really worth highlighting. Uh, in, in the fall on our benchmark, um, only 34.3% of our students were, um, scored on grade, on or above grade level. And on the winter benchmark, uh, that, that rose up to 60.4%. So I know that we've talked a lot about literacy here and a lot of, specifically the early literacy that we're teaching at Warren and all the work that has gone into that, um, you know, with, with Kate Altman, who now has moved to Mendez and Pete and Kathy Farakia. And I just really, it's a, it should be a point of pride for those teachers there. And I really wanted to just be able to talk about that publicly of, of what a great jump that is from the fall to the winter in terms of how our, our students are progressing.
Specifically the iReady data you mentioned?
Yes, specifically the iReady data. And that iReady data, I, I, I think that we're probably overdue for me to kind of take some time to go over a lot of that data. Um, in a meeting, we set some more, you know, intentional time for that. But I just wanted to, you know, let that be known, that we're really proud of that. And, and, you know, and, uh, we saw it in math as well. We, we saw a pretty significant increase in math to, um, 18% of our students were on or above in the fall at Warren and in the winter data, 43.8. So we're, we're seeing great growth. And this was also, there was, there was great growth throughout the entire district, um, with what we did. But I just really wanted to point out the work that's been happening there. And I think some of that math is also probably directly related to the ST Math program that we adopted this year. Um, and Pete and Kate wrote a grant for it. And I'm excited that, that Jenna has decided to write the same grant to try to bring ST Math to Mendez. And ST Math is a program that provides students an opportunity to, um, solve math equations in a really different way, in a, in sort of a game style. Uh, and I think we've, we've seen that our kids are benefiting from that. Uh, so I'm excited that they're trying to get that same grant at, at Mendez. Um, beyond that, really exciting stuff. Um, you know, I talked about our year two, three mentor program that I'm really proud of, our, our partnership with Mendon Upton and, and Milford. Uh, over the next month, we are going to have 37 teachers, 37 of our teachers visiting Milford and Mendon Upton on various dates. And we'll have 26 teachers from Mendon Upton and Milford on March 4th and 24 teachers coming on March 13th to see the great work that our teachers are doing. And one of the things that we focus on when, when they visit us, we talk about student engagement. Um, and we have them look at, at how our teachers are engaging our students. Um, and, and finally, I know I said it last time, but we've got a wonder, a wonderfully robust, uh, drama department here in Ashland and we should be proud of that. Uh, Chicago is, is coming on board here on, on this weekend. Mr. Harrington's, uh, students are performing that Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And, uh, at AMS, uh, The Miraculous Journey of Edward Tulane debuts tomorrow evening and Saturday afternoon at the middle school. Uh, Mr. Langmeyer, an Ashland High grad, has come back as our, as our drama teacher. And he's excited to have a performance with his students. Uh, so I'm looking forward to going to that tomorrow night and hopefully heading to the high school on Sunday.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for me? Laurie? Give me a dozen, thank you. Uh, Jim?
Just briefly, just a couple of things. We have, uh, continued our work on our budget. Uh, we have, March 16th is a workshop for the school committee. Uh, and we have an admin meeting Tuesday of next week to, to really clean that up a little bit. I'll be meeting with Mike Herbert on Monday, uh, to see where he's, he stands right now currently with the budget. So we'll be having a conversation there.
Scheduled for 8:30 to noon.
Correct.
Showing in my phone is.
Probably, it's going to be at the Mendez School, in the music room. That's, yeah, yeah.
Did you just tell us that a good theory?
Um, yeah, I don't.
For first I heard about it, so I don't know.
Uh, the process of, um, negotiations are underway, uh, with our paraprofessionals, our ESP unit. And, uh, that's, uh, going well. Um, and there was one other thing I was thinking about, the budget, paraprofessionals.
Was it the overnight trip?
Oh, yes, just a update on, uh, during, during February break, our wrestlers, um, were in, participating in the States and New England and needed, uh, you know, had an opportunity to stay over because they weren't quite sure if they were going to play in the morning. Our policy is that normally it would come before the school committee, uh, for approval. But we do have a section within, uh, the policy, uh, that allows administration to make the decision to allow folks to stay over, uh, and then report it out. So that's what I'm doing. Uh, there is also that potential, uh, happening again this weekend, uh, coming up. So, um, we had six wrestlers last weekend, uh, stay over, uh, in Beaverton. Uh, and we potentially have a couple that might stay over.
And, and Jim, because it was a little confusing based on their message to us. Um, it's because they, because we drove, they, they went down on the bus is the reason. Because you said that they stayed with their, their parents.
Not everyone stayed with their parents.
Okay, okay.
No, so it, that's the reason why it's not everyone's with their parents.
Okay, so that, that's the part I was confused about. Where, where is it falling with our?
It falls within the, that frame. It's a school trip, so, yeah, yeah. That's all I have, yeah. Thank you, Tina, for reminding me.
All right, uh, Paul, Warren approvals?
Sure. Uh, between February 15th, 2024 and February 28th, 2024, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of $745,871.2. This includes general fund expenses of $647,287.36 revolving expenses of $94,190.84. Grant expenses of $4,299 and meals, tax expenses of $93.82.
Thank you, Paul. Any gifts and donations?
There's one. I'm trying to read, it's so small, I couldn't read it. Starburst Printing and Graphics of $50 donated to, uh, Ashland, uh, Middle School Drama Club for the production.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the gifts and donations as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, all in favor, Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
And aye for me. And then, uh, committee reports of activities, member updates. Let's start with Laurie, since she's away.
You think to add?
Okay. Uh, Marcy, anything?
No.
Tina?
I have, no, not this week, no.
Uh, nothing in particular. I just, uh, we did receive our supplemental reimbursement last week from, uh, I think I mentioned it previously and, and Marcy, it might've been prior to you being here. So, uh, the legislature approved $100 million, uh, of funding to the MSBA to, um, uh, add supplemental reimbursement to projects that were adversely impacted by, uh, the pandemic. And, uh, we were one of the first ones, uh, on that list. And, uh, we did receive, we submitted in, uh, about a, it was actually pretty quick. So I think it was the end of last month, we submitted and last week, we did receive the $5.5 million reimbursement, supplemental reimbursement for that. So thank you to the legislature for that. That'll, that's, uh, it doesn't, as I said before, it doesn't increase the project budget. It just decreases, uh, uh, the amount, increases their, their portion of that pie and, and how much we need to do for long-term borrowing.
So probably too late to undo some of the value of engineering decisions you had to make.
We've, we've had a lot of conversations about that, um, and we.
I was being somewhat facetious.
No, it's, it's a valid, it's a valid question because we, we've talked about it multiple times. And there, uh, most of the things, um, we, uh, as I said, as I said, it didn't change the overall budget, but most of the things that we, uh, removed, we had as add-ons afterwards. And we've gotten most of those things back. There's, there's certainly changes, um, that didn't come back because they were too late, uh, but I don't think there's substantive ones.
Um, and for me, uh, the biggest ones of the state council earlier today, um, we've already talked about it, you know, the topics we've talked about. I'd just say, they're, they're really having very thoughtful conversations, um, in, in the room. There's Kelly, um, Miss Calant, um, both the deans typically, um, Sullivan wasn't there today. Uh, one, two, four parents are present today, one student, um, Ms. Toomey and Ms. Egan were all there. They're, they're really just doing a really nice job trying to sort of work through the issue. So give them credit for the time and energy they're putting into it. Other than that, I have nothing. With that. With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
But I have a second.
Second?
I like keeping it, keeping it consistent as I look at you.
Give me the deer and antlers. Lori?
It's my new role.
Aye.
Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And aye for me. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.